Good evening. On behalf of the Ashland Action Project of Southern Oregon Climate Action Now, welcome to the 2020 Ashland Climate Voter Project. My name is Lori Kaplan and I'm the coordinator for this event. I want to open this program by expressing our collective deep grief at the events of the past week. There really are no words adequate to the situation. So I would like to ask us to begin by pausing and having a moment of silence together. We are reminded of how we are all deeply connected across the Rogue Valley. So while the focus of this evening is on Ashland policies focused on reducing and adapting to climate change, we all know more than ever that Ashland does not stand and act alone. Our topic of this evening could not be more timely. So I'm just going to tell you a little bit about our rules for this evening. All the questions have been said to our candidates in advance. We will not have back and forth or discussion because we're managing time. And everyone will have the same amount of time for their answers. And we're going to rotate who goes first so that everybody gets a chance to go first. So now I'd like to introduce our moderator for this evening, Barrett O'Brien. Barrett's a theater artist here in Ashland who's deeply committed to climate issues. And we're thrilled to have him here as our moderator for tonight.
Thank you, Lori. A huge shout out to Lori for her engaged toil to make this event happen and her undaunting belief in the power of community. Lori is the champion and she's a friend and I just pause to celebrate her. Hi, everybody. I'm Barrett O'Brien. I'm an artist and a teacher, a parent, a SOCAN member and a resident of Ashland. We take a moment to acknowledge that Ashland, the community of Ashland was built upon the traditional lands of the Teckelma, Shasta and Klamath Basin people. And it is in the sense that we are moving forward with this privilege of continuing this collaboration with them, of stewarding this exquisite piece of earth that we all get to call home for the time being. So tonight, we are discussing climate issues with four candidates for city council position number three. Now, contrary to popular opinion, city council position number three is nothing glamorous, flying around the world, movie star, party attending position that you might think it is. It is a position of great work, committed time and effort. And knowing that, I know that all four candidates come to the table this evening with a deep belief in our community, a deep love of where we live and a vision for moving forward in our collective future, a vision that is bright and positive. And I'm very excited to hear about those visions and those images from our four candidates. So thank you so much for y'all's time for being here. Please welcome Julian Bell, Kelly Markatouli, Sean Moran and Gerardo Padilla, candidates for Ashland City Council Position Number Three. Welcome. So we're going to start with an opening statement. And how opening statement work is each of the candidates will get a minute and a half for opening remarks. And in these remarks, we've asked them to share some of their feelings about climate change issues here, specifically in Ashland. Biggest concerns? Do they feel that Ashland residents and the city have the responsibility to reduce greenhouse gas emissions? We'll do a kind of rotating volleyball style answers to all of our questions tonight. So for this first opening statement, I'd like to begin with Julian.
So my name is Julian Bell and I live in Quiet Village. And I lived in Portland from 2006 until about 2010. I moved to Medford for a year and then I moved to Ashland after that. And I became concerned about climate change when my daughter was born and she's about nine years old at the moment. And since then, I've spent most of my spare time working on climate change issues in one way or another. So in 2000, so I actually initially joined SOCAN as the first thing I did. And I then became a member of Rogue Climate and a variety of other different organizations. And after the failure of House Bill 3470 in 2016, I was very irritated at our state level leadership. And so I ran for governor against Kate Brown. And I actually got 8% of the Democratic Party vote, which was more than I had anticipated getting. And then from there, I continued to do other political work in various different locations. And then in 2018, I ran for the Senate, just the state senate district three here in representing Southern Oregon here. And Jeff Golden won that and I think he's doing an excellent job of that in that position. After that, I ran for the Ashland Parks and Recreation Commission. And since then, I've also been on the Climate Policy Commission, helping to work on updating the SEEP and other city goals.
Thank you, Julian. And I want to note, everyone can't see it here. And then in the future, when you log on and watch this in the future, we have community participants who are logged on right now as part of this evening's event. When we were discussing this event, we just thought it was very important that there be community witness. And though they're not on the screen and their microphones are muted, you are very much part of this evening. And we so appreciate your time and the chat room is open. So please share your thoughts and thank you for being here. Can I hear from you, Sean?
Sure. Now, good evening, everyone. Firstly, I'd like to take this opportunity, thanks SOCAN for putting this important discussion together. Many thanks to Lori and Barrett for all the behind the scenes work. But I'd like to take the opportunity, offer my condolences to everyone impacted by these devastating fires and the smoke and give a special shout out to our firemen and first responders for a general. My name is Sean Moran. I have lived in our wonderful town with my family since 2009. Since moving here, I've experienced many firsts. People have said to me, you know, this summer is the hottest it's ever been. This winter is the snowiest or it never gets this smoky. So my views on climate change and the issues around climate have been influenced by these very experiences. But of all of the issues that we are going to discuss today, to me, there is nothing more important than addressing safety and fire mitigation. As Kate Brown said on Face the Nation this past weekend, wildfires are a wake up call on climate change. I think Ashland is, we're incredibly lucky. If the fire had burned to the south instead of the north, many of us would have been in real trouble. So as a councilor representing you, I will make fire mitigation and implementing an effective and workable evacuation plan a top priority. In the end, the number one job of our elected officials is keeping you safe. So thank you for the opportunity to discuss these issues with you.
Thank you, Sean. Gerardo, can we hear from you, please?
I am unmuted. I will share a screen. And can everyone see my desktop?
Yeah, we can.
Perfect. My name is Gerardo Padilla. I work for the Department of Human Services for the state of Oregon. I'm a Ash citizen of the city of Ashland. I live in the railroad district and I'd like to thank everyone for joining today and listening to us speak. And I hope to meet all of you soon. So I start off here with Hurricane Katrina, August 2005, before I attended university. I attended the University of California, Santa Barbara. And I have experience with environmental refugees. My roommate, my freshman year, I was supposed to attend Loyola University in Louisiana, had to be evacuated because of Hurricane Katrina. And in September of 2005 was my freshman roommate at UC Santa Barbara. This is some of the things that happened in Louisiana during Hurricane Katrina. Luckily, my roommate was able to escape. A lot of these folks were not able to. This is Isla Vista. This here is the beach community caught on fire, caught on fire, going down floods later. This is Oregon. I am an example of environmental refugee. I know. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Gerardo. Appreciate you. Thank you. Okay, bring the screen back. And Kelly, can we hear from you, please?
There we go. Sorry about that. Okay. Hi, everybody. I'm Kelly Markatouli. And I want to thank SOCAN for hosting this event. I also want to thank my fellow candidates because running for public office, especially between these difficult times, is not easy. The challenges we are facing ahead are huge. So my background, I was raised in Hollywood, California, in a loving family. We had values of kindness, wisdom, respect and responsibility. And during my upbringing, those values were drilled into me to be a good person and to be a good steward of the planet. I went to UCLA. I studied sociology and I learned Spanish. And I eventually received my teaching credential from UCLA. After teaching about 30 years, during that time, I married, I had two children and eventually I divorced. I married my current husband, my teen crush. And a few years back, we both realized that Ashland, we had this affinity for Ashland. We discovered it separately and we resolved to finally purchase a home and move here. So camping, hiking, swimming, all these outdoor activities were always a part of my life. And as an educator, I would always teach my children about the value of our environment and how it was in our hands to protect it. And that's what brings me to this moment of striving to be an Ashland City Council member so I can assist our beloved town to heal, obviously, from these devastating fires and to move forward. Thanks.
Thank you, Kelly. And to everyone watching, obviously Lori's here to keep us on track with our 10 second marker. And of fairness and also to be able to hear as much as we can and get through all night questions this evening. So thank you guys for being so diligent in watching that. And Lori, thank you for holding us to that honest timeframe. So the question that I'd like to go to is following up with Sean was saying, it's one we probably is on the tip of all of our tongues, fire safety and risk reduction. So tonight's attendees had the opportunity to send their questions about the fire. And we forward these questions to the candidates. So they had a little time to read through them and find some things that really caught fire in their soul for them, using that metaphor and purpose. And they're going to talk a little bit about some of the questions that resonated with them and share their resonances. So we will begin with Sean, please.
Okay, great. So if it's okay, I would like to take a stab at four and five. So how should the city pay for efforts to improve safety? So one of the big problems that Ashland is facing is unfortunately, our budget is incredibly stretched. We have absolutely no reserves. I shouldn't say absolutely none. There's $39,000 in reserves in a 300 plus million dollar budget. So you know, the fire department, where the wildfire division, which is, you know, the division that, you know, we've mentioned and we'll talk about, has a budget of nearly $20 million. So I think through the budget process and as we move forward here, you know, we could be discussing a way to pay for the wildfire division or increase in expenditures towards fire mitigation via a realignment of assets within the fire department. It's a reasonable discussion. And I hope any one of us that succeeds and gets elected would look to continue with that idea. The wildlife division in this past budget is funded at $2.6 million, which is about 120% increase from 15, 17 budget. So Ashland has done a good job. You know, Mayor Stromberg should, kudos to Mayor Stromberg and team for a success story on Ashland Fire Resiliency. It is an amazing program. It's been going on for 10 years. Over that time, 15,000 acres of our watershed have been treated, have been managed, which is pretty incredible. That said, there's still 40,000 acres left that surround Ashland. So you know, what I really think we need to call for is this can't be just an Ashland only issue. This needs state representative help and we really need to call on the powers of Governor Brown to support, you know, the wildfire AFR resilience program that we have here, you know, intensify the thinning program that we're having in the forest. And I think, you know, it is a cost, but it's essential, as we've just seen, for the safety of all of us in an important resource well spent. So the other question, how can we create more fire breaks and exit roads in and out of Ashland? Well, I'm not a scientist, but I know after months of rain, these fires burn incredibly hot. And with that dry ecosystem, the fires tend to spread quickly. And with 35, 40 mile an hour winds, they get pushed forward. So having fire breaks really are ineffective and they've proven to be costly and ineffective. I think the discussion around exit roads is really important. If, you know, people who tried to get on Siskiyou Boulevard could attest, it was loaded with trucks because traffic was rerouted from Highway 99. So we need to look at that exit road strategy to make sure we have a safe place to go.
Thank you. Gerardo. Muted.
I'd like to tackle the question about what is the role of the city government in improving wildlife safety and reducing wildlife wildfire risk? The city has the technological infrastructure and the ability to communicate effectively with citizens. Let's start there. And I think that's amazing. I don't think they're being leveraged enough. I think that we could do a better job at communicating with the citizens of Ashland to avoid such panic situations that happened this past week. I listened to Police Scanner and that helped a lot. We need to facilitate communication. We need to have streams of communication open. We need to have more proactive communication with the citizens of Ashland. The other thing is that I don't believe that we need to spend a lot of money on this. I think that we can have proactive training and preparedness and the communication needs to be ongoing. Workers of the city, thank you, workers, listening to that police scanner. Wow, the type of things that they have to deal with besides fires, thank you. So the workers of the city of Ashland, the citizens of the city of Ashland need ongoing training on techniques and information so that we can tackle this together. The other day, I was driving up Indian, I believe, or 66. We saw some smoke coming out. What did we do? I went to Target and I got a fire extinguisher and I put it in the car. I think something as simple as every citizen of Ashland, not a mandate, a suggestion and information of having a fire extinguisher in the car. You pull inside of the road, you put something out, it helps. Simple solutions to big problems. We're all in this together. It's our town. We love it. We live here for a reason. Let's see, what's the other one? How can we create more fire breaks and exit roads in and out of Ashland? Wow, I listened to that police scanner. I checked ODOT. Roads closed north, roads closed south, roads closed to the coast. The only one that was really free was 66. Dead Indian was closed. Five, good luck getting up to Medford and up to Eagle Point. And Roseburg had a fire. South going to Crescent City, the 101 was closed. What I would like to see is I would like roads to be a priority. Having a feeling of panic because you can't leave. You can't fly out. You can't drive out. You're stuck. I don't want to die in an inferno. We need to prioritize having roads open. Public safety is key. We must all do our part. Thank you.
Thank you. And just acknowledging that people who have been chatting in the chat room, we do see your comments and it's wonderful to have your presence in that way. Kelly, can we hear from you?
Yes, so I couldn't agree with Gerardo more. Our public safety is key. And I believe that, well, I'm going to hit on the first question regarding the organization of centralized information. And I believe our city does need to do more. I think the first step would be to provide a debrief of what happened and where the problems were and how to improve upon those problems. So we need answers. Also, it's why the Jackson County Emergency Alert System wasn't utilized. I think a central management system of alerts, emergency staff and evacuation routes is essential. We need a plan and I feel like we don't really have a concrete plan. A police scanner, I guess that's one way to get that information. But if you're not savvy enough to have that, we need to hear it on the radio. We need to hear it on the TV because I know I turned on my TV thinking they're going to have information. What's going on? Nothing. So I think the Jackson County Alert System really needs to be analyzed and find out what happened there. As last week's events showed us, we are extremely vulnerable and the current emergency evacuation plan is inadequate. I also want to touch on the fire breaks. We've talked, everybody's kind of given their input. And I totally believe that we need better access to, we need a better map. When I pulled up what was there, all routes led to go to Siskiyou. Well, that is not feasible. That's not going to work. Again, as Gerardo mentioned, the traffic was prohibitive. So I do think that we need a better organization of police sheriff units. We need to set up our traffic patterns. And I do think we need some demolition done on some roads that go nowhere. So you have Ashland Street heading towards the campus and that's a dead end. I don't know how to mitigate. I don't know how to make that happen. But I feel like we definitely need, also, we could change the traffic patterns on Siskiyou. We've got four lanes. And during an emergency, we need to have personnel guiding people to say, drive the opposite way on this route and you'll get through the fire. So we need town hall meetings to further learn about what our residents have to suggest. And I think the public information is going to be a key component in surviving what we're dealing with. If people keep putting their heads in the sand and thinking, okay, somebody else is going to deal with these issues, there's no engagement and there's no buy-in. And we need that from every citizen in Ashland.
Thank you. From Christina LaFever, I just want to read, "We love our fire department." Exclamation point. Thank you, Christina. Just want to echo that. The true hero work that happens that we don't get to stand and see. Julian, please. My ear muted.
So there was multiple different questions that we offered. The one that I kind of took on and thought that I could expand on a little bit is, what is the role of the city government in improving wildfire safety and reducing wildfire risk? So my view of the responsibility of the city is that the city is actually you. You know, the city represents you. It is your main agent in the public arena. So it functions kind of like your right arm. So absolutely, your city should be looking out for your safety and your well-being. We live in a city that's made out of wood in an area that's prone to fires. And so we are not off to a very good start. But even so, I think there are strategies that we can use for existing infrastructure, existing buildings, houses and things that the city could advocate for. For example, keeping your gutters clear of flammable debris, advocating for people filling up their gutters by blocking the downspouts and putting a sprinkler system on the roof, trying to ensure that people have defensible space around their house. The city can emphasize these things and encourage people to do these things. Another thing that strikes me is that I think that it's going to be important to emphasize new construction coming forward into the future. A lot of the existing houses around here are at risk of fire damage. And I understand the concept of moving away from an oncoming fire. But it also strikes me that we should have some plan to ensure that at least part of our city is not going to burn down in the first place. And so my hope would be that we can develop high density workforce housing that is fire resistant in the downtown area, particularly around the railroad district, for example, that could be easily defended and at low risk of burning and could represent a site that people could go to rather than hoping to drive all the way down to the coast through the forests. The city can do some things about the, besides for treating the watershed, we can also do some things about the plants actually within the city, like emphasizing trees with high canopies or mature trees and things like that. The Ashland Forest Resiliency Project is an excellent project and that should certainly continue. As far as communicating with the residents around the city, one thing that has been suggested is repurposing the Reader Reservoir Alert System, which goes off regularly during the day, or I should say, once during the day, which is audible from, I believe, everywhere in the city. That's the intention of it. And that could also be used to announce other catastrophes or disasters of certain levels. One other thing, and I know that Councillor Graham, Tony Graham, is running for office in part because she also agrees that the city is not very good at communicating with the residents. And so there's a lot of potential work to be done there. And the last thing that I would suggest is that I've always liked the idea of a fireside chat that the leadership of the city could offer, maybe a once a week kind of review of what's been going on and put that on our local radio stations for people to listen to and be updated about everything that's happening in the city.
Thank you. Thank you, Julian. And just an acknowledgement of the density of information that everyone's getting, candidates and people listening, it's just a testament to the work that you guys are putting yourself in position to do. And the real effort that goes into being a councilperson and trying to acknowledge that. And also acknowledge that this is being recorded. So if there's, for people watching, if you feel like you're inundated with information, the wonderful thing about this technology, the wonderful thing about doing this on Zoom is we can go back and digest it again and hear these answers, pause it. And we have such a more informed way of being a voter base. So I think there's a real silver lining to being forced to be not in person, but on this recording. We're going to do another question. After that question, we're going to do a short poll so that our participants have a chance to chime in nonverbally. This next question is, do you feel that the city has made measurable progress in achieving the goals of the Ashland Climate and Energy Action Plan adopted in 2017? Given the city's fiscal challenges, how would you, as a member of the city council, ensure that the city fully implements the plan in the future, both in its own operations and in the broader community? So a big question, but our candidates have had them in advance. Gerardo, can I hear from you first, please?
Of course. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So I want to start off by thanking everyone and just acknowledging that creating the Climate Energy Action Plan is measurable progress. Kudos. I want to acknowledge that the CAP aligns with the desires and wishes of the citizens of Ashland. And I want to acknowledge that the CAP aligns with desires and wishes that I have. This is a process. It does not end and it is ongoing. The CAP needed to be advocated for the project. We needed to align interest groups. We needed community input. We needed research. We needed getting the plan together. We needed completing the plan, presenting the plan. That is time and effort. Those are measurable results. The fact that we can debate a plan that is on the table is progress. Do we stop with just the plan at the table? No. Do we need to continue? Absolutely. How do I, as city council member number three, continue this progress? We continue the conversation. We put in the work. We break down the pieces into a timeline. We budget. We do the easy, simple things that we have infrastructure in place to execute first. We plan and budget with Ashland citizens consensus for larger projects. Second, execution of feasible economical projects first while planning for long-term projects. Second, is that time?
Yes, thank you, Gerardo.
Thank you.
Kelly, please.
So I do not feel that, I don't feel that citizens know enough about the CAP plan. And I feel that it's a wonderful structure. It has the information that's needed to get these goals met. But there's not enough enactment of those goals. And I know I'm responding from the fire event we just witnessed. And looking out the window, we see the smoke every day and we think, what can we do now? How can we make more? How can we make more rapid progress on the actions that have been laid out? And I think that's going to be key and I think most residents of Ashland don't know about the CAP. So there's no ownership of it. And these recommendations in the report are very valid and very worthwhile, but they don't do us any good if it just remains in a big document. I did watch the Climate Commission meeting in August and I admire and I want to acknowledge all the work that those people put in. But I do think that the planning is done. And now we need, like Gerardo said, we need a timeline, we need commitment, we need to say, okay, by this date, this is what's going to happen. Who's the point person for that person? Subcommittee's, I don't see the value of them. I don't know how they're moving the plan forward. And I just think that we could also get our electrical vehicles in place and have the city use those instead of fossil fuel burning vehicles in the town.
Thank you, Kelly. And to Kelly's point, for those of you who don't know, SEEP is the acronym for the Climate Energy Action Plan. Ashland Climate Energy Action Plan adopted in 2017. Thank you. Sean, please. Oh, actually, I'm sorry, Julian. It's not like a game show where I'm just going to randomly call on you, I'm sorry. Yeah, I like that. Maybe I should, maybe it's more exciting. Laurie, what do you think? All right, Julian, thank you.
Sure. Well, so by progress, I assume you mean a measurable decrease in the emissions in Ashland's greenhouse gas emissions. So Stuart, Stuart Green, is the main person that is responsible for the Climate Energy Action Plan and he's responsible for the city's approach to greenhouse gas emissions and sustainability. And he actually has put together multiple different presentations to the city council as well as others. And you can find them if you're interested in it, the website is ashland.or.us/climate. And so there is a list there of the measured goals that the city has accomplished as a result of the SEEP. But that being said, I think by and large, most people around the city would not feel that the city had made as much progress as they would have liked. And so one problem is that the SEEP is definitely a very sprawling document and it is definitely not a step-by-step strategy for how to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. The Climate Policy Commission is actually tasked with rewriting the SEEP and we are hoping to make it into a more practical document. Most climate policy plans for different cities are very aspirational without a lot of on-the-ground, step-by-step pathways to get things done. However, one of the important things to do with the Climate Energy Action Plan, once it is actually rewritten, is to incorporate it into the city's comprehensive land use plan as well as the other master plans, which will mean that it will be a part of the methodology of all land use decisions, capital investments decisions, and other city decisions. So that is, would be a huge step forward for that plan because at the moment it doesn't have an actionable mechanism.
Wonderful. Great. And thank you, Bob, for putting up that website address in the chat. So we're going to give, Sean, after Sean speaks, we're going to pull up a poll. Laurie's going to give you a chance, a little warning that we're going to do that, so you can have that ready. And Sean.
Thank you. So look, I mean, the bottom line is SEEP is a 128-page document. It's complex, it's very detailed, and it's a document that, you know, somewhere between 30 and 40% of Ashlanders don't know about. So education is a really important key. The reality is it's an ambitious blueprint that, you know, lays out the steps for the city to reduce emissions in its carbon footprint. It's a good plan and something that I support. I think if the definition of success or progress is being measured by people who look at ensuring that 10% of our electricity now comes from new clean renewable sources or that Ashland, you know, will continue to renew its greenhouse, community greenhouse gas emissions by 8% a year, then they might be disappointed. But I think if you look at SEEP, there's countless successes and I think it's an important point. You know, many people that I know measure success and progress via SEEP by understanding that consumption patterns are indeed changing in our town. Looking at the water master plan, the revised water master plan, the projections for the next 20 years of water consumption is going to drop 12 to 14%. People want to produce less waste. And clearly, there's measurable progress in the transportation sector. You know, we've added bike lanes, community bike surrender, etc. So I think the biggest way to ensure, you know, going forward that the plan is implemented is that the city continues on this path of education, people will catch on, our leaders need to lead by example. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
Laurie, can you lead us through how this works? And this is a little chance for the candidates just to catch breath, have a little air. And Laurie, will you walk us through how this works?
Yeah. First of all, I want to thank everybody. This is kind of like speed dating or something. In order to get four candidates on, we really felt like we needed to manage the time rather than go for two hours. So I really want to thank everybody for what you're trying to communicate in a minute and a half. So take a drink of water. We're going to just do a little poll. We have a couple polls just to give us a break for a minute. And they're all based on the Climate Energy Action Plan. So this is your chance to show whether you've read our document. So let's see, I can use this. Okay, I'm going to launch the first poll and panelists, you can vote too. Let's see. So the question is, according to the goals of the SEEP, by what year should Ashland City Operations achieve carbon neutrality? You can vote, everybody vote by clicking on the answer that you think is correct. And we have 36 participants out there, so I want to see everybody voting. Show me that you're still out there listening.
This is not what we wanted to be. This is what we think is written in the document, correct?
Exactly. This is, what is this actual approved goal for the city and the city operations here, not residents? When are we supposed to hit carbon neutrality?
All right, so as people vote, I'm just going to, and you can tell me when we have consensus. Right now, I'm just, go ahead and talk about the next question that's going to be on the docket here. And it reads as this, "What three specific things would you do on the council to make Ashland more environmentally sustainable while promoting economic and social resilience?"
So just a feedback on our poll, you guys did a great job. The answer, correct answer is 2030. And that was the most popular answer. So this is a more informed group than the general public, I tell you that. That's a really good sign. I'm happy you folks are out there. It makes me really happy. Share, sorry, there we go. Now, do you see it?
Look at that.
Did I do it?
You did it.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
I really appreciate the 4% who said 2025. I love that kind of optimism, really. So two bad questions. Specific things you would do on the council to make Ashland more environmentally sustainable while promoting economic and social resilience? Kelly, can we hear from you first?
Sure. So this is a broad question with a lot of different answers and a lot of different variables. I think we need to encourage our citizens to not buy packaged plastic goods and to buy bulk. COVID obviously dealt us quite a blow in that because I myself would go to shopping cart, I'd have my refillable containers and I would love the store for that reason, you could refill. And now that plan is out, but I think we can resurrect that goal of using refillable containers. I also think using the Conservation Commission and the Climate Change Commissions to further, to look at the SEEP and really find the actionable items that could be achieved quickly. And I also think that with the industry, that with hemp industry, why, I feel like we need to really access that technology of hemp and find out how we can get businesses into Ashland, Oregon, into the Rogue Valley that will utilize hemp as a renewable resource. And that will hit our economic goals and also work to become more of a sustainable society here. Thank you.
Cool. Thank you, Kelly. Julian, please.
So I suppose maybe one single goal that encompasses several of these different things would be changing local zoning rules to make it possible to add high-density, low-cost workforce housing that is accessible to the downtown area and is essentially completely electrified and does not rely on natural gas for its power. That, I think, covers a lot of the different, or, you know, gives some value to a lot of the different things that you're targeting there or hoping to work on. Again, I think the railroad property would be a great place to do this. This is the property that's on the west side of the railroad tracks. Another possible site for something like that would be the current Briscoe School. Other specific things that I would like to work on if I'm elected to the council are gasoline-powered landscaping equipment phase-out. The small engines that people use for landscaping equipment are fairly easily replaced with electric devices. The gas-powered engines emit a lot of ground-level pollutants and also they consume a lot of gasoline. I would also like to see an ordinance that requires parallel wiring in new construction that is for electric appliances as well as natural gas lines with the idea that if electric appliances become less expensive in the near future or even just per preference of the owner, that people can actually preferentially choose electric without having to rearrange their entire house. I also think that houses should be electric vehicle wired, meaning ready for electric vehicle charging.
Thank you, Julian. Sean?
Thank you, yes. Here's what I came up with. Firstly, I think, you know, in this time of economic strife, that we need to promote economic development, and Barrett, don't take this the wrong way, but beyond the theater tourism theme that Ashland's relied on, you know, forever. I think we need to emphasize green jobs, recreational jobs, biking, wine tasting. The Rogue River, amazing asset right down the road. Some of those kind of things. I mentioned before forest thinning. Again, you know, more people consuming, not the optimal approach, but it beneficial in the sense that it reduces a fire risk. Also, urban farms. There are some great examples downtown. Grow and consume more products locally, beneficial for all. I also support the idea of expanding defensible space and community resilience measures like, you know, Ashland has a huge problem with parking. It's always been a problem. But if anyone, as people watching have been to Bend lately, there is an incredible vibe in Bend, a bend-type work-play environment. We could create a parking lot space near granite, but, you know, somewhere close downtown and make it a pedestrian, live-work-play environment. I think it would be super environmentally beneficial, no cars, but citizens could enjoy the Ashland living and plus help out our economy. And lastly, convert city buildings to solar and city vehicles to full electronic or hybrid. We can benefit from electrical vehicle charging stations, which Julian mentions, which would help revenue production as well.
Thank you, Sean. Gerardo?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. What three specific things would I do as a city council member to make Ashland more environmentally sustainable while promoting economic and social resilience? Love this question. Number one, because of COVID, COVID is awful. We must all stay safe. We have learned that we can work from home, some of us can. And I want to encourage folks, if possible, if able, if permitted, and it doesn't hurt our economics, to be able to work from home, less folks out on the road. Also, I'm a walker. I love this town because I walk everywhere. I walk to Peerless, I walk to Safeway, I walk to my bus stop, I walk to the Co-op, I walk to Snap Gym, I walk to Ace. I love walking. We need to encourage more walking. And we also need to encourage public transportation. I use RVTD when I can. I love it. It's my preferred form of transportation. I take it right here at the Safeway, I get off in Medford and then I go to White City, hour and a half. I enjoy the bus drivers, I enjoy the companionship and I enjoy the relaxation of not having to concentrate on the road. It's lovely way to decompress. You just get a nap, you reload it every month, you're good to go. The folks are lovely, the bus drivers are so friendly. The other thing that I would absolutely love is, why don't we have once-a-quarter street festivals? That encourages businesses, it's sustainable, it garners a sense of community and we'd all have fun. And these things I think about in terms of economics. They can't be crazy out there. These are things that we can actually do. Thank you.
Thank you, Gerardo. And to Preston who put in the chatroom, Ashland rocks. Thank you, Preston. So next question is my favorite kind of question because it has real practical, three things we'd like to hear. So the question is, what three things would you do on the city council to help bring green jobs to Ashland? Obviously, we talked a little bit about this through some of the other questions. But to reiterate, what three things would you do on the city council to help bring green jobs to Ashland? Can we hear from Julian first?
So the two main clean energy job generating activities are putting in solar electricity or retrofitting homes. I'm very hopeful that we can put together a contract either with Pure Light Power, which is a local company that is something along the lines of SolarCity or Sunrun, which people may have heard of, which is a firm that can take on the investment risk of installing solar panels around the city. And that we could use a contract in that way to expand Ashland's solar electricity generating capacity for two reasons. One of them would be that it would create local jobs, but also because the Bonneville Power Contract will be terminating. And I can never remember whether it's 2025 or 2028, but in any case, it is terminating in the not-too-distant future. And if we don't have solar electricity generating capacity ready at that point, then we are going to wind up having to re-sign that same or a similar contract. If we're able to put together a contract with an outside investor, then I think the city should ultimately own the solar generating capacity because that generates very inexpensive electricity, which is a net benefit to our city-owned utility and the power can be used for revenue for the city as it sort of currently is. Retrofitting creates seven jobs per million dollars spent, solar installations, correct, five jobs per million dollars spent. So these would be potentially real jobs on the ground here in Ashland.
Thank you, Julian. Sean?
Yes, thank you. I think first and foremost, I would like to pursue the idea that we need to debunk the myth that we can't support a healthy environment and have a robust economy at the same time. I think those are definitely things that can happen simultaneously. Someone touched on it earlier. COVID-19 has forced everyone to work at home. Working at home is green. I support that. There is a wonderful program in Tulsa. People can check it out. It's tulsom remote.com. They're advocating for people to move to their beautiful community. It promotes remote working. Ashland, you know, for a lot of these other communities, they need to sell people on the quality of life. Ashland's quality of life is absolutely amazing. We could bring people here who want to bring their own businesses and work from home and that would encourage and stimulate our economy. I've mentioned before, outdoor tourism. Rogue Valley Mountain Bike Association have a wonderful piece PDF out there that they passed around called "The Trail Map to Recovery" and how communities outside of Ashland have reinvented themselves through mountain biking and the benefits, economic benefits of that. It's something we'll touch on when we talk about the bikeable infrastructure, but I think it's a wonderful idea. I think it's something we need to do. I've mentioned three times, forest thinning, I'm a huge believer of it. And I think we need to encourage businesses to come here by incentivizing them with either environmental credits or tax dollars in order to make it happen. But it can happen and we should do that.
Thank you, Sean. Gerardo?
Yes, what three things would I do on the city council to help bring green jobs to Ashland? Great question. The first thing is, it's important to have a conversation with the citizens of Ashland to achieve a consensus. to achieve a consensus as to what green jobs look like to us. What do we want them to be? Let's talk about it, let's plan it out. Is it manufacturing? Or is it as simple as creating opportunity zones and economic incentives for green jobs for Ashland? I'm open to the idea of incentivizing solar. I don't mean tax credits, I mean, why don't we have discounts, percentages on roof inspections? Why don't we have a break on taxes for our local builders who build wonderful, great quality, beautiful homes that we all love to live in here in Ashland? Nothing too big, nothing too complex, like, let's take small bites out of this pie, we will eventually all eat it. Little things, little incentives, little ways of making our town greener.
This question to me now. Wait, good to go? Can you hear me? Okay. So the three things that I would do as a city councillor to help bring green jobs to Ashland, I would first publicize and support the green businesses already currently working here. We need to highlight, highlight them and give them publicity through either the city council, so it might be some kind of an infomercial that's placed on the city website, and promoting those businesses currently in place here. That's one step. I also agree with, I think everybody that's, our solar output should be increased, and to do so, we need to offer incentives to get people to have a solar audit, and that is pretty much free because if you call the solar companies, they will come into your home and look at your, your roof line and the exposure. So that's already a good, good approach. And the other third approach I would take would be to provide incentives for buying local. I'm not a fan of Amazon, and I do not think that people purchasing a product that has to get shipped overseas. Anyway, I think that we need to really fully promote and use the local resources we have here already. And our farmers' markets are incredible. I would suggest opening up more ways for them to profit from our, our love of our local businesses and our local artisans.
Thank you, thank you. All right, we're in the trenches here, we're working so hard, and thank you for our participants for being with us, and all the candidates, for your work. We'll do another question, after that question, we'll have another poll. And we'll keep diving into these very important issues, so thank you all for your eloquence and time. This next question is, what three steps would you support on the city council to further develop a safe, walkable, bikeable infrastructure? Okay, Sean, will you go first, please?
Can back up. First and foremost, I think what we need to re-establish is education around the importance of bike safety. I think it was up to this, right before COVID, every fifth grader in Ashland, and I believe this was sponsored by the Parks Department, was given a Bike Day educational program, super important, it needs to be restated, and we need to find the funds to do it. I've also been told that the Ashland Bike Code is a bit obsolete and doesn't comply with the state code, needs to be rewritten, so easy fix. More importantly, I think, without adding pricey new infrastructure or more bike lanes, expand the walkable areas in all directions around the plaza. Let's fix sidewalks, paint crossways, let's create a visual, create a visual bridge so people could discover the surrounding neighborhood. So really innovative, you know, and not that, not that expensive to do. And I mentioned before, as the Rogue Valley Mountain Bike Association, sorry, it slipped my mind, you know, Ashland is already known as a destination place, so you don't have to sell that. I think we have to kind of think out of the box a little bit to kind of get the ball rolling, and how do we use some of these ideas from a biking community to, to grow our, our community.
Thank you, Sean. Gerardo?
What three steps would I support on the city council to further develop a safe, walkable, bikeable infrastructure? As you guys have heard, I love walking, it's one of my favorite things. I would like to make sure that intersections are labeled and that crossing is safer pedestrians. On B and second, as I walked to the Co-op, there's a crosswalk that isn't brightly marked out, and the cars go all the way to the first one, and you just don't know where to walk. It blocks the walkway, and I always have to make eye contact or I'll get run over. So I want to make sure that pedestrian safety is highlighted, it's something that we need to be able to do. I want to make sure that the bike path that connects neighboring towns up and down the 99, that bike trail, it's gorgeous, we need to make sure that it's pleasant and that it's safe. I have friends who bike it to work, they love doing it during the summer. I see no reason why if we don't make it more pleasant and more safe, it wouldn't be used more. And then I would love to have more pedestrian activity, it's once a quarter for commercial and restaurant, street activity. Let's help our businesses, let's help our restaurants, let's all enjoy our lovely Main Street and have a good time. Let's make this place profitable for all our lovely business owners and for us.
Thank you, Gerardo. Kelly, please.
Great, so I know that Sean talked about the Rogue Valley Mountain Bike Association, but along with that association, we have other, we have street bikes, regular bikes, and then you have, excuse me, you have your hiking groups. And so I think we have the, the need and we have the want, and I think we also have the master plans already in place that have established these routes and established what needs to be done to create these walkable and bikeable pathways that are accessible to the public. And I think that here, we don't need to really reinvent the wheel, we just need to put the pedal to the metal, and we need to actually get going. I think asking the Transportation Commission to develop a calendar where we have again a point person and we have actual delineated dates where we say, okay, by this time, we're going to get this done. I think that would be very helpful, and I think engaging the public because I think Gerardo's a great example of saying, here we are, we have all these people who are invested in using these lanes for bikes and, and walking, and they're the resource that we need to tap. So those would be some of the things I would do. Have I named three? I don't know.
I think so.
Yeah, I just think being reasonable with the completion, with completion dates would be a first step.
Wonderful. And Julian, please.
So COVID-19 threw the city into a bit of turmoil, and so there was, we were going to have a vote on the transportation master plan, but that was postponed due to COVID-19. The Climate Policy Committee had been working on a plan for a bike share project for the downtown area to make bicycling safe and a practical means of transport for a wider part of the community. And I'm hopeful that we can get that back in front of the Transportation Committee before the master plan is finalized in Berlin. So that plan would include making bike-safe lanes through the downtown area, decreasing speeds in the city to 20 miles an hour. It has to be possible for bicyclists to make it to all of their usual destinations by bicycle, for them to have a reason to rely on bicycles as their, as their main means of transport. And the main disincentive for people is concern for their own safety, which is very valid. Decreasing speeds to 20 miles an hour greatly decreases the harm that somebody faces in an accident, and it makes it much more easy to, or much easier to navigate through traffic. It is also, I mean, transportation is a critical issue to making Ashland more sustainable and decreasing our greenhouse gas footprint. It's at least a quarter of our greenhouse gas emissions here. Another thing that I think would help with increasing the walkability and the bicycle access of the city is a project that I mentioned earlier, which is working on high-density, low-cost, electric-only workforce housing built in the downtown area, readily accessible to downtown. One other thing is that increasing bike and pedestrian access is good for streetside business. It's from the Rocky Mountain Institute, I believe, but there's data supporting that.
Thank you, Julian. So Laura's going to bring up a poll, and we're going to take the poll, but instead of hearing the answers right away, what we'll do is we'll take the poll together as a group, and then we'll go into question six, and then after question six, we'll find out how we did. Lori?
Yes, again, this is directly out of the Ashland Climate and Energy Action Plan. It says we will likely see what in Ashland by the 2080s? You have to pick one.
All right, so I'll let people take their, take their vote, we'll come back to see how we did after this next question. This next question reads as this. Do you support the continuation of city programs that provide free fire-wise audits, energy and water conservation incentives and audits, and solar incentives? Are there any changes you would like to see made to the city programs? And how would these changes affect the city's ability to achieve the goals of the SEEP Plan? All right, so I'll repeat that question after we do it, after two people answer, because it's a, it's a mouthful. But Gerardo, would you speak to that first?
Okay, here we go. All right, I'm unmuted. Yes, I do support on steps to expand the use of solar power in Ashland, of course. I think solar power is definitely the way to go. We can see from fire safety, just down power lines, horrible, solar is definitely the way to go. I love safety, I love the public being safe, I love clean energy. Yes, solar, yes, yes, yes. So also, let's talk about incentives for builders. Let's not just put the cost squarely on the consumer, let's also help out the builders to incentivize the construction of new homes, of retrofitting homes, give them a tax break so we can have more solar. We need to have permit cost reductions for those builders and clients and citizens who want solar. We need to subsidize a percentage of roof inspections to make sure that clients, citizens, and builders are incentivized to do solar. And we need to have a property tax break with set limits, not forever, on homes that retrofit and that build with solar. We need to encourage solar, we must go green, we must future-proof our city for all of us.
Thank you. Kelly?
So I think I mentioned this before, but there's a problem with these free audits, and I believe there's about three staff people in the Conservation Division who are supposed to be available to do these audits, and people don't know about them. And so education, that's, that's a key, that's a key component of being successful in any of these endeavors that we look at, at the SEEP goals. We have to get educated, we have to educate each other, and the residents need to know what they can do. As we talked about, yes, solar is definitely going to help us out of our fossil fuel problem, and getting solar companies to come into homes and do a free audit, that's, that's another approach. Reducing water usage and using the Ashland website and getting more alerts to let, to let people know, because unless you read the newspaper, how would you know that, that Ashland is in a, I'm going to get the wording wrong, I think it's the Phase One Water Curtailment Program. How would people know that unless you read the paper? So I think that we need staff, current staff, to go out and sell these measures that we have already in place. And we have alternatives, we can, we can insulate homes better, and we can really work on getting to the SEEP goals and committing to getting them accomplished.
Thank you. And to reiterate, the question is, for the next two candidates, do you support the continuation of the city programs to provide free fire-wise audits, energy and water conservation incentives and audits, and solar installation incentives? Are there any changes you would like to see made to the city programs? And how would these changes affect the city's ability to achieve the goals of the SEEP? Julian?
So I don't, so as far as I know, none of those goals are terribly, sorry, none of those audits or incentives are terribly expensive to the city, but even so, the city is still strapped for cash, and the amount of increased access to solar or amount of retrofitting that those programs represent, I think is relatively small. And I think for the kinds of big steps that we are hoping to take, particularly with increasing our solar generating capacity, I don't think the city has the revenue or the resources to directly invest in the kind of work at the scale that's needed. And so I think it's really unavoidable that we need investment from outside of the city. So that could be, as I said, Pure Light Power, which is a local company, it could be Sunrun, which is a company, I believe, based in California and San Francisco, it could be SolarWorld. Another idea that I have, that I think is, would be very helpful for the, for recovery from COVID, for recovery from the fires, and working on climate change would be a publicly-owned bank. And that could be a, it could potentially be a state bank, although there's a constitutional amendment prohibiting a state bank, which would make it a challenge, but it could also be a municipal bank, you know, smaller cities around the state that could pool their resources and be able to make loans to develop infrastructure. Outside funding, I think, is critical towards getting to the SEEP goals.
Thank you. Sean?
Conceptually, I do, but honestly, I think we need more discussion around it. I think what we're referring to here is the work done in the Energy Conservation Division, right? And there's been a lot of moving parts in this, in that, in that division, and that's where SEEP is presently silent. Prior to that department, prior to the department called the Energy Conservation Division, it was called the Conservation Division, which came out of the Admin Department in 2012, and then the Water Department in 2015, I think just the last budget was put back into admin. So what I'm saying, and I am not disagreeing with what Kelly and Julian kind of referenced, we have an incredibly squeezed budget, we're going to have to make some very hard decisions next June, okay? I want to make sure there's no redundancies in tasks and that we are executing completely efficiency and scale. It's a two-year budget of 1.9 million, okay? So we are investing in that space, but if things like duct systems and home energy analysis and roof line analysis, a water conservation may be an exception, but if some of that stuff can be done by the private sector, like True Soul or Vista, I'm all for that. I want to free up the resources, the human resources and the monies to, to focus on SEEP wildfire mitigation, achieving the goals that that document sets up.
Wonderful. Thank you, Sean. So Lori, can you walk us through the results of that last poll?
Can you see it?
No.
Oh, okay. Well, it was kind of a trick question because once you read through it, you knew that the answer probably was all of the above, as depressing as that is, those are pretty dire predictions, but that does tell us why we're here tonight talking about this subject. So, thank you.
How was our reality base on voting? Did most people do all of the above?
Yeah, 78%. Oh, I'm sorry, share results, 78% of people did, did get that correction, that correct, so.
Very interesting.
Yeah, not, not good answer, but people are aware.
Okay, okay. All right, we're in the home stretch here, team. The next question is worded as such. Do you support taking steps to expand the use of solar power in Ashland in the coming years? If yes, what would be your approach on the council to adding more solar energy production in Ashland? Kelly, will you go first, please?
Well, as I understand it, we have an ordinance called the 10 by 20 Ordinance, which was developed a number of years back. Dave Halmich and Tom Marvin worked on that ordinance, and they were in conversation with the mayor for, I believe, about three years, and they worked out, they worked it out to the point of having a request for project for a solar farm. And they know the technical details, and I would suggest using resources like that, experts who have already vested, invested many hours in the process to realizing this goal. So the answer is yes, so I support taking steps. this goal. So the answer is yes. So I support taking steps. I do, definitely. We have a contract with Bonneville Power. And Bonneville Power gets 50% of its power from coal-powered utility companies. So moving away from that would, and moving towards solar, would help us get to our renewable energy goals. And I believe that we can work with other municipalities, especially with Talent and Phoenix. Right now, they have the capacity perhaps to really engage as a unit with us in order to build a solar energy company or production.
Thank you. Julian?
So Bonneville Power is very low carbon power. I think the proportions are 80% hydro and 13% nuclear, but it's still 5% natural gas and coal. It's also a very inexpensive power. But if you were able to install solar panels, at least at current retail rates, they basically pay for themselves in around about seven years, even compared with Bonneville Power, which, like I said, is relatively inexpensive. So again, I think it would be ideal if the city of Ashland could actually install sufficient solar generating capacity to be able to to be able to provide all of its electricity, if possible, I suppose, among other things that would go through our own locally-owned utility, which would be under public control and which could be, which the city could adapt to changing climate needs. Other things about solar that I think are important to mention are that it's relatively disaster-resistant. You know, there's a big issue with our grid going down in the event of some catastrophic events, such as an earthquake, or perhaps an even worse fire, heaven forbid. And so for multiple different reasons, I think that increasing Ashland's solar generating capacity is actually a very important part of getting to the SEEP goals and mostly getting to the the goals of the residents of Ashland.
Thank you. Sean?
Yes. So look, it's solar plants, in my view, might be a good long-term investment for Ashland, not only for the environmental benefits, but for absolutely the energy assurance as well going forward. The problem, to me, is that still, it is very cost prohibitive. Exactly why the council in the latter parts of, early parts of this this year rejected the idea put forth for spending $2.1 million on a solar project. The cost recovery was estimated to be 90 years, and it didn't include battery or panel replacement costs. I am absolutely, wholeheartedly in favor of solar panel replacements, retrofits and incentives for both residents and businesses. And I think, you know, Bonneville Power has been mentioned a couple of times. The contract expires in 2028. Maybe by that time, the cost, you know, for battery and panels will come down so the city can actually plan and propose and afford a comprehensive 20x7365 solar project. I'd also like to throw out there that if I'm elected to the city council, it would be a duty for a new council and mayor to make it a priority to include pursuing economically viable green policies as a long-term city goal as well.
Thank you. Gerardo?
Oh, yes. Do you, do I support taking steps to expand the use of solar power in Ashland? Absolutely. On what would be my approach on the city council to adding more solar energy production here in the city of Ashland? We need incentives for builders. New homes that come up, they need to be incentivized to go solar. We need to subsidize inspections. We need to bring the cost down to get our solar up. We need to subsidize building permits. And we must give a property tax break with set time limits for our citizen homeowners of Ashland. We need smart, simple solutions that stimulate the economy. We need that. We need to save citizens' money. We need to save businesses' money. And we need to save builders' money. It's been hard earned. They deserve it. And the city of Ashland deserves to go solar. We must future-proof and help progress Ashland to the vision that I know we all have for Ashland. It's a beautiful place. I love it. We know what we have to do. Let's rumble with these projects. Let's plan them out. And let's make them happen.
Thank you. So we have two more questions. Lori, after this recording is done, where are people able to see this recording if they want to watch it in the future? Where do people go to see this?
Thanks for asking, Barrett. It'll be on the SoCan website, as well as they have their own, there, you can see, I was really timing people. So Can has a YouTube channel. And that's where they will all be. And we're gonna wait till all three, you know, we have the mayor event on Monday, and then the other city council races are the following Wednesday. And after they're all done, we'll be putting them up on the SoCan YouTube channel. And by the way, there are already a bunch of other interviews on there for Oregon House and Senate and County Commissioner that SoCan has already done.
And what is the SoCan website? Can you just say that for us? And can somebody maybe type it in the chat room as well?
Yeah, it's so can dot eco.
Right.
S O C A N. And my trusted assistant will type that into the chat for us.
Perfect. Okay, last two questions, Candice. And thank you so much for your time and intelligence and research. And it's just humbling to be part of this, and it's an honor. So thank you. Question number eight is, what three strategies or programs could the city implement to make climate action more affordable to renters or low-income residents? Julie will go first on this question.
So I've, I've already talked to you a little bit about investing in solar. Again, I just wanted to reiterate that I don't think the city has the resources on its own to invest in large-scale solar installations that would be, that would make a meaningful dent in our energy portfolio. But I do still think that outside investment, either through an independent company or through a publicly-owned bank, would be a way to generate that revenue to be able to, to expand our solar generating capacity. If that's all, you know, if that energy is owned by the city, it has the potential to be very inexpensive energy. Other things that I think would be, I think my connection's falling apart here. Other things that I think are potentially helpful even to renters or low-income residents are making the city more bike and pedestrian friendly, because it means that people are not committed to owning cars or multiple cars, one per family member. I also, as I mentioned before, really think that it would be helpful to have high-density, low-cost, electric-only, affordable housing close to downtown. This would also decrease, I mean, if these are either low-energy or electric-only, or even maybe autonomous buildings, then that, these would be people that could potentially rent spaces that are carbon neutral from the from the start. And so, you know, sensible, pragmatic development in the downtown area, I think, would be, would achieve multiple different things at the same time.
Thank you. Lori?
Thank you.
Or did you have more to say? I'm sorry, Julian, there's a such an elegant pause, I thought you were done.
Oh, it's okay.
Okay, thank you. Sean?
Yes. Maybe we could look to adopt some passive passive solar requirements when building affordable homes or retrofits. And that would simply not be applicable to cost. We could use higher R30, R38-type insulation, which would better trap the energy and prevent loss, the transfer of energy, optimize the slope of roofs. There's a myriad of things. Graywater systems we could look at, looking at window placements in new buildings, where trees are planted, internal ventilation and air distribution. Lots to do, very little cost, a lot of it revolving around the architectural format. So better planning and tweaking some of the existing building restrictions and requirements. We could better manage, maximize energy efficiency, and make it more affordable, and have less carbon emissions. A win-win win. Promote and encourage consumption of locally grown and sourced goods. I think all of us have touched on that before. It's a win-win for local jobs. And it also lowers carbon emissions. And promote public space food production in urban farms, accessible to all. A win-win there, too.
Gerardo?
Yes, I am unmuted. Okay, so what three strategies or programs could the city implement to make climate action more affordable to renters or low-income residents? It's simple. It's a principle of supply and demand. We need to have a city consensus by the citizens of Ashland on how to steadily grow the city of Ashland to maintain the aesthetic, the idioms, the heritage, the ideals, the architecture, and the architectural direction we want to move towards. We live in, we live here in Ashland for a reason. We must respect the past to build the future. We do stand on the shoulders of giants. That Lithia Park, it's beautiful. Oh, my gosh, I love it. We must grow in a thoughtful way to future-proof our city. Housing is tight here in Ashland. We do need more housing here in Ashland. We must figure out a way to do it in a sustainable, progressive way with the consensus of the citizens of Ashland on how the direction of that progress will look like. It's not just me. We all live here. We all love this town. We all have ideas. I want to hear those ideas. I'm sharing a YouTube video on what happened in San Francisco with supply and demand and the housing crunch and what has it caused. That's what I'd like to avoid here in our lovely city of Ashland. That's how we help our working class by building. Thank you so much.
Kelly?
Okay, so the question relates to implementing climate action for more affordable to renters and low-income residents. So I'm gonna touch on that. I think that collaborating with SOU, they have an environmental studies program. And I would love to see a collaboration. I would love to see input from those students who have an investment in their their field of expertise and coming up with novel ideas through that school program. I would also push for a downtown shuttle. And that shuttle would provide local opportunities for people who wanted to park outside of the downtown area to then use the shuttle to get to and fro, back and forth from one end of the downtown area to the next. I would also encourage free passes to RBTD. I understand that a few years back, the city actually gave regular residents RBTD passes. And that might be used as a solution to help people power down, not stop using their vehicles to get around. It's a question of ownership. We have to engage the public. We have to inform. We have to educate people. And we have to, I think Sean mentioned this, we have to insulate homes so that even the low-income and the affordable housing population have homes that are not leaking energy and move forward that way.
Wonderful. Thank you. So we'll, we'll, we'll do one last poll here, and then we'll hear the results after this, after this final question. So how the rest of tonight will go is we'll have one more poll, we'll have one more question, we'll show the results of our poll, and then we'll have some, about a minute and a half each for some closing remarks. So what do we have here, Lori?
Yes, again, testing our knowledge of the SEEP. According to the SEEP, which of the following is the biggest contributor to greenhouse gases in Ashland? Is it city operations or commercial energy use, residential goods and services, or on-ramp vehicles? The votes are coming in. They're still awake. They're still listening.
All right, so while you guys, while we get our, our consensus, we'll go to this last question of the evening. And a great evening, Espen, and thank you for your time, everyone, participants and panelists and Lori at SoCan. So the question is, do you think that the use of natural gas should be reduced in Ashland? If yes, how? If no, why not? Okay, Sean, can I hear from you first, please?
It's an admirable goal. Ashland doesn't want to encourage liquid national gas, LNG projects like Jordan Cove. They don't create sustainable jobs at all, and they're very dangerous for the environment overall. I think we should look to end the fossil fuel infrastructure. I think that's an important point. At least don't commit to building of developing more fossil fuel entities. Jordan Cove Pipeline, no, thank you. Foreign company, uses our land, impacts nearly 400 waterways along the way, very bad risk return. And I'm glad the consensus view is is saying no on Jordan, Jordan Cove. Again, I support converting city buildings to solar, passive solar, eliminating fossil fuels, or at least reducing as much as possible. But let's be completely honest here. We have a community of 20,000 people. Gas really is a low-cost, efficient provider for many homes for heat, secondary source of heat, and for businesses, you know, for restaurants as well. It's not going to be easy. But I think a move to 100% clean electricity is a great goal. And we need to help people phase out of the gas concept. It won't be easy, but it can be done.
Thank you. Gerardo?
Oh, yes. All right. So natural gas, I believe in the, I do believe in the freedom of choice. And I do want to make it abundant and clear. I do not support the gas pipeline at all whatsoever. But I do believe in freedom of choice. And I do believe that fossil fuels will be in the past. We're going to move beyond that. What I would like is, we need to have a consensus from the citizens of Ashland on how to move forward. And an idea that I have and that I support is to have education and economic incentives instead of legal coercion, economic incentives and education to move us to more an electrical future. If that means that we do a little tax break for electric appliances, that I fully support that. But, but yes, there's a, this has been a thing for me forever. I'm gonna share a YouTube video. I love YouTube videos. This is a river in Australia catching on fire. I don't want that. I don't think anybody here wants that. So I don't support the pipeline. I think we need education. We need a consensus. We need incentives to move ourselves to electricity. Not legal coercion. Nobody should be cited or, if you're 80 years old and you have kept your gas stove, you don't, you shouldn't go to jail. I don't think.
Thank you, Gerardo. Kelly?
I think that we should, yes, work to limit our use of natural gas. But I think it's a really lofty goal, and it's really going to be difficult. And I think that in order to do so, we need to have a renewable alternative available. And that could be the solar farm, as we've talked about. And I do think expanding this Rogue Valley concept, where we form a coalition with our community members of Phoenix and Talent, they're going to rebuild. And perhaps they will get grants that we can work with, and they can join our efforts to become less dependent on natural gas and, and other fossil fuels. So yes, I would just say it has to be a realistic goal, and you have to plan ahead.
Thank you. And Julian?
So yes, I support eliminating natural gas. It has to be eliminated. It has to be eliminated somewhere between five and 10 years from now. I mean, that's a step-by-step process. And when I say eliminated, what I mean is down to, I don't know, perhaps 20% or 10% of our current consumption. If you oppose the Jordan Cove Pipeline, then you oppose consumption of natural gas anywhere, also by yourself. Meaning that there are certainly people out there who I think are opposed to the Jordan Cove project, but nevertheless have gas appliances in their homes. Those also have to go. So many of the people in the audience would already know this, but natural gas is as bad as coal, or perhaps worse, depending on whether the life cycle leakage is 3% or greater than 3%. And we cannot keep adding new natural gas infrastructure. Portland has already banned it. And Ashland should be working on doing that as well. One other thing that you may be interested to know is that the consumption, that the, one of the single largest consumers of gas in Ashland is the Daniel Meyer Pool. Daniel Meyer Pools spent or consumes $50,000 worth of natural gas a year, up until the point at which it was no longer functioning. Some of that is because it also has to heat the pool. Some of that is because it also has to heat the pool in the winter to accommodate SOU students, but even so, that's a tremendous amount of gas. If you want to work on decreasing our greenhouse gas footprint, please come to the APRC meetings where we discuss the pool and tell people that you want it to be renewable energy-based.
Thank you, Julian. All right, Lori, so what was the effect of our poll?
This was a close one. This was kind of a horse race. The correct answer is residential goods and services. Yeah. And in fact, residential goods and services, including food, account for 98% of greenhouse gas emissions in Ashland. Did I get that right, Julian? No, I didn't get that quite right. Half, half, half. Residential goods and services and residential food account for half of Ashland greenhouse gas emissions. I got it right. It's almost time for me to have a beer, I tell you. You guys have been great champions tonight. I can't believe how much you've been sharing tonight, so I'm just --
Yeah, everybody watching right now, and everybody who's going to watch this later on the SoCan site, you know, this, the brilliance of this is if we all vote, right? To have this image of us shocking the world with our voter percentage this year in, for our citizen's entry in Ashland, and just to reiterate that the, and someone correct me if I'm wrong, the ballots are mailed out on the 16th --
Wrong one. I thought it was the wrong one, sorry.
That's okay. So the ballots will be mailed out on the 16th October, so arriving and mail them in. Get them in early. And also, correct me if I'm wrong, anyone, you have, the ballots need to be in by the 3rd of November, not postmarked on that day, but actually to the ballot place by the 3rd. So if you're running late, you could go to an actual Dropbox by the library, for example. But let's shock the world with our voter percentage. We're in the position to do that. Now going to just take a moment for some closing remarks. Everyone will get a minute and a half to talk and just, and leave us with some thoughts from you, that is not directed by a question from me. Gerardo, I'd love you to lead us off.
Of course. Thank you so much, everyone, for your time. I appreciate it. I also would love to have a beer after this, with all of you, actually. That sounds fun. My, the reason why we're showing those pictures at the beginning is because there's no escaping this. The reality is here. It's not just an island nation sinking somewhere in the world. It's in Santa Barbara. It's in Northern California, and it's in Oregon. It's here. We have it. We know what we have to do. We just need to start planning. We need to start budgeting. We need to take action, and we need to, we need to just start doing the thing. My job is to advocate on behalf of all of you people. Thank you so much, your taxpayer, your tax dollars pay for me to help our fellow community members here, so I want to thank you for that. I advocate for those people on your behalf. I advocate for myself. I advocate for you. I know that these types of things take research. They take time. They take planning. They take homework. They take diligence. They take someone who is invested in the future and the progress of the city of Ashland. I want to thank you all, and just know that I loved reading that document, that SEEP document. It was amazing. It's beautiful. It has a lot of useful ideas. We just need to create the plans, the things that we have teeth, so that we can start taking chumps, take bites out of that plan and just get it going. That's what we really need. So I want to thank you all for your time. I look forward to meeting you, and I look forward to advocating for all of us together. Thank you so much. Ashland, I love you. I'll see you around.
Kelly?
Can you, you can hear me? Okay, great. Well, I've always been an environmentalist, and I've been deeply concerned by the direction that our country was taking in caring for our beloved home. And as a teacher, I always integrated environmental studies into my lessons. I would sponsor Earth Day events. I established recycling programs at the schools I was at, and I actually created an ecology elective at the middle school where I worked. So these efforts seem trivial now, but I know I planted great seeds of environmental awareness. In the face of the devastation that we are dealing with now, education and commitment to change are necessary and required. We can't continue making plans to plan and then plan again. I feel that we really have an urgency to act, and we've got to, like I've said, calendar and commit. We have to reduce our consumption of both fossil fuels and water, and we will, and those measures will help, but they are just proverbial drops in the bucket. Seriously, looking at our energy use for our digital devices is urgent. Most people know that I'm an advocate against 5G. It's the next leap in technology, and it is not sustainable at all. The Internet of Things, as in smart appliances and AI, will further add to our energy demands, and the only real benefactor will be the telecom corporations. The raw materials needed to produce the 5G transmitters are excavated from deep in the ground, resulting in the decimation of once pristine lands. Transporting those transmitters and sending 5G satellites into space will further add to the pollution and the problem. Sustainable living means powering down in every way manageable, and we must pursue solutions to climate change right now. Thank you very, very much, everybody, and I wish all four, three of you great success. And if any of us win, I feel like we're going to make good things happen. So thank you very much.
Julian?
So I hope to represent you on the city council in 2021. Climate change has been my main motivating reason for being involved in politics since about 2016, and whether or not I'm elected to this position, it will continue to be a huge issue for me, and I will work on it wherever it is that I'm able to work on it. The city council is a team effort, and you, in order to accomplish the things that you're hoping to accomplish, you need the support of other councilors. And so I think that there is a significant role for members of the community, obviously, I suppose, to support the concrete steps that we can take going into the future by communicating with councilors and encouraging all of them to work on these immediate sort of steps that we can take. I'm hoping to be a strong advocate for climate change if I am elected to the council, and I appreciate you all attending this presentation. Thank you.
Sean?
Thank you all for the time tonight to discuss these important issues. The city has made some definitive inroads into addressing the importance of taking a proactive step towards climate change via SEEP. However, the reality is our budget is incredibly stretched, and the COVID crisis has made things even worse. We need to make every tax dollar and available grant work efficiently and effectively going forward. Our city has some real hard decisions to make in the days ahead. Our commitment to SEEP is ensuring that reducing Ashland's greenhouse gas admissions is a priority, and our community is committed to taking responsible steps to address climate change. I completely support that approach. Emphasizing the importance of climate-friendly land use, maximizing the conservation of energy and water, and adopting creative strategies like converting city buildings to solar and town vehicles to electric when they need to be replaced are small but great steps towards our commitment to addressing this changing climate. We must continue to pursue a strategy of protecting our forests and watershed through the good work of Ashland Fire Resiliency, seek ways to find incentives to make renewable energy more economically viable, and continue to work to educate all Ashlanders about climate change. Clearly, this is an educational process, but this commitment to our environment is essential and vital, an important part of what makes Ashland special for each and every one of us. Thank you for the time tonight. Much appreciated.
Thank you. So before, I just want to give this assignment to everyone before we leave. In the chat room, what I'd like you to do is just do a thought experiment, and I want you to pretend you're in Ashland in 15 years from now, and you look around and you see something that is the best, brightest, most amazing future for this town, and it's a reality. So as we wrap up this wonderful panel discussion, just type that, something you see in the chat room, and that's fine for you, too, candidates, and dream big, everybody, right? Like, oh my gosh, look over there! Whatever that is for you, just type that into the chat room, maybe an image you see in this little time travel you did 15 years from now in Ashland. So that's us for tonight. I want to thank Lori and Carmen and Kathy and everyone at SoCan for making this possible. I want to thank our amazing candidates for your time and your energy and your commitment to where we live, and remind everybody to vote, make somebody else vote, and then also remind you that this entire webinar will be on the socan.eco website soon, so you can forward your other friends who are curious about environmental issues and climate issues to the video to see it. We'll keep this open. You're free to log off, but we'll keep it open for the chat room, for people to write down their visions for Ashland in 15 years from now, and for other people to scroll through and enjoy those. But for now, signing off, thank you for your time. Lori, would you like to say anything before we go?
I just want to thank everybody. You guys are real champs, really studied up on the issues and really took this seriously, and I really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Lori.
Good night, everyone. See you around now.
Thank you.